10:00, the time is 6:30. I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, good evening, this is Budget Deliberations Night. In terms of the budget process, we have completed all of the Board of Ed and Town Departmental Budget Reviews and are here this evening to deliberate what changes or actions we would like to make to the Town and Board of Ed proposed budgets. As a reminder to our audience, the Board of Finance can make line item changes to the Town side of the budget, but can only make an overall Board of Ed budget change, not any line item in the Board of Ed. So, as always this time of year, I'd like to start off by saying I'm very appreciative of all the work done by the Town and Board of Ed staff in putting the information together and doing the presentations to both the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And a thank you as well to our IT help and all of our Board of Finance members for their time and effort that they've put in. So, what we're looking at tonight, the 2023-2024 budgets for the Town and Board of Ed that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Ed have both adopted is in front of us. Big picture, we have Town Operations' proposed budget of an increase of $1,072,808, which is a 5.23% increase. A Board of Ed operations budget with an increase of $4,806,374, which is an 8.88% increase over the previous year. Our debt service is up $1,293,897, which is a 26.38% increase over last year. And capital other, a decrease of $67,909, so down 10%. So, overall expenditures would be $87,309,435, a $7,105,170 increase over last year, or 8.77%. So, if the budget is adopted as is, the value of one mil is $2,797,103. The mil rate would jump 1.61 mils, and the overall budget would increase 6.75%, as red rays are projected to increase 6.7 million, or 8.27%. This year, I think the whole evaluation is a little bit easier than last year when we had revow. And so, when we were trying to determine the impact of a mil rate change, there was a lot of moving pieces to that. This year, it's a little bit more straightforward. If you had an assessed value of your home of $200,000 and the mil rate increased from the current 23.84 to 25.45, you'd see an approximate $322 increase in taxes. If you had a $300,000 assessed, it would be a $483 increase. If you had a $500,000 assessed value, an $805. And I think, Kevin, you pulled out our medium, and that's a nice little recap of how the mil rate.
So, this is from Zillow. So, I used the first date of the month. So, it's from the Zillow's website, based on however Zillow pulls their numbers. So, assessment is 70% of the mil rate last year, that's locked in. The number on the fiscal year '24 side, that's interactive. So, that'll change based on what happens tonight. So, we can kind of periodically go back here and take a look at that number. So, you see, you know, overall, it's about $900 on a $450,000 house. And that's, you're not taxed on the value of your house, you're taxed at the assessed value of the house. So, monthly, it goes up about $76, so for a $450,000 house, current budget where it sits. So, you know, as we make adjustments, we can just, you can have me, you know, go back and forth between the pages.
Great, thank you, that'll be helpful. Overall, I think the financial landscape continues to be challenging. Inflation is hurting all of those on fixed incomes, and, you know, many fear that we're headed into a recession. We were fortunate that the weather cooperated with us this year, and we didn't incur much in the way of winter storm expenses. We also had the benefit of growth in our grant list of $33,466,000, or 1.21% increase, which helps as we spread expenses over a larger tax base. However, with salaries and benefits fixed through the union collective bargaining process, we can do little to address some of our largest expenses. So, with inflation affecting the Town's expenses, as it does our residents, I'm once again just asking the Town and the Board of Ed to understand that we need to do what we can to help alleviate the burden on our residents. So, with that introduction, if any of my fellow Board members have any initial comments that they'd like, you know, please feel free to speak up. Any just overall? Nope? Okay, so with that, what I thought we would do is proceed with the Town budget. And after we complete with that deliberation, we can move on to the Board of Ed budget. So, first of all, you know, the whole budget process takes months and months and months, and sometimes information comes in after the voting has already taken place. So, I'd like to start off with our first selectman, Mr. Siri. If there are any modifications or things that have evolved since the time that you adopted the budget that we should take into consideration for...
I have a couple, and I think Kevin has a couple that you want to address too, correct?
I just one.
Okay. And my first one would be from capital. I think I had mentioned last week, we were going to take a look at taking some American Rescue Plan Act money and apply it to items that were basically one-time, basically items that were going to be paid for by cash out of the capital plan. And I gave a copy of every one to everybody else, it would be item 2A of what we approved at our meeting last week on Wednesday. Basically, we've taken $98,160, or not to exceed is what we approved. It doesn't, don't have to spend that much, but not to exceed. $98,160, we can remove from the capital plan right now for cash. And it'd be for five self-contained breathing apparatus cylinders for planters, six for Niantic Fire Department. The upfitting of engine three, that's the money, that's $20,000. The chief has given, Chief McDonald gave me a breakdown. $6,000 would be for tools, sawzall, a cut-off saw, chainsaw, impact drive, and a battery charger with spare batteries, portable lights of 500, battery-operated smoke ejecting fans, 5,000, hose adapters and appliances, 2,500, miscellaneous hand tools such as halogen bars, pipe poles and hand tools, $1,000. And then, he also indicated inspection trip to plant for 5,000. That kind of got a question by members of our board, so I asked for the chief for clarification. He said, got back to me the next day, and he stated that the manufacturer recommends that department send two people to the plant for inspections on two occasions. First would be at a point where the engine is getting ready to be painted. This is about the 75% to 80% completion rate. And this is where you can review the progress and address any concerns, such as I think the chief mentioned, one time they went out and found out the paint, you know, two different colors for the cabin, the chassis. So, that was addressed, and some other specifications as well regarding the thing. And the second visit is a pre-delivery inspection, just prior to the engine getting ready to be sent to the Town. It's during that visit, the Town makes the decision to accept the engine or have any final concerns addressed. So, the cost, basically, two round-trip airfares for two people on two occasions, hotel accommodations, which would be a maximum of two to four nights, vehicle rentals, and meals. Chief said he thinks that's high, but he doesn't want to come back for another 1,500 or so forth. So, it would definitely be not to exceed. So, that's what he stated as well. And that is the adjustments we can make to the capital, which would be actual real dollars, not just, you know, trying to figure out what the bonding cost would be or so forth like that. That's actual stuff that's in our capital right now for paying cash for next year. And Kevin, you had something you wanted to address?
Well, I thought you wanted to talk about the other items.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. I was just confused. Okay, so I know there was a question that came up regarding police officer. Oh, wrong computer, wrong computer screen. So, there was a question regarding how much a police officer, the annual cost approximately. So, it depends, really, the big question is, depends on how many people we're insuring. But just a rough number, it looks, appears about $86,500 for single. If it's a single plus a dependent, it is about $98,000. And then, if it's a family plan, it's over $100,000. So, and that is just the body, the equipment's about $13,800, the health insurance, and then the, you know, the hourly rate. So, the wages, that's not including overtime, right? So, this is just, you know, straight, so.
And in that same subject, especially with a lot of overtime anticipated with the work that will be going on for the interchange, can you just confirm how pension benefits are included in what we charge back for private duty?
Okay, so, private duty, let me pull up the pension plan and the contract. I'm not versed 100% in what it says.
Yeah, I should have probably brought this up before.
Yeah, I believe there's caps, like, so overtime is capped. Kevin might know this a little better than I do.
I think for private duty, I think after the first $15,000 counts towards retirement. After that, it does not. If, while you're discussing other things, I can run back and get a contract.
Okay.
But then again, he might have it right here.
Yep.
But I think it's $15,000. And then, after that, it, no, it does, I mean, if it's regular overtime, every bit of it counts. But if it's a private duty, after a certain amount, it drops off.
Yeah, I was wondering what the reimbursement from whomever they're doing the work for.
No, we get paid totally, we get completely reimbursed for anything that is worked. We send actually, we get more than what it costs for an officer to be at the scene.
Right, and I'm just wondering if there's some percentage that's added on to account for the added pension benefit.
There's a fringe, there's a whole formula for the fringe cost.
Uh-huh.
All the fringe benefit, yep.
Yeah.
So... I just know that question comes up a lot.
Yep, so, in the rate we charge, every, the beginning of every year, I calculate the fringe benefit rate. So, I take, you know, the hourly rate and then add up all the benefits. And then, that gets calculated into an hourly amount. That's charged to the people. And then, on top of that, there's an administrative 3% or 5% just to do the paperwork. So, the retirement is built into that rate. So, the rate we charge isn't the rate the officer makes, there's a, there's the difference.
Right.
The fringe benefit's calculated.
Okay, good, thank you. So, back to you, I think you are going to then go on with the retirement.
Yeah, I'm currently working through the calculation, just to make sure my numbers are right. So, if we can go to something else, I'll come back to that at some point.
All right.
Kevin?
Yep. What's Kevin?
For Kevin Siri, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a problem.
Yeah. Okay. For the point that you mentioned about using ARPA funds to relieve the capital expenses, were some of the ARPA designations that we had previously not used or changed?
No, this is money that was not encumbered in the process. We had set aside quite a bit of money, and Kevin's got the list. Such as, we left an emergency contingency, which was significant. Same thing, we had $25,000 for attorney fees. We're, even when it was really busy last year, we still have close to $18,000 in that. So, the thought is, the emergency technically ends next month anyway. So, we felt, right now, we're still leaving about $17,000 in that account for if something comes up. But we felt this would be a good usage of those funds right now. And all of these items have been okayed by, reviewed by, and okayed by a town attorney.
Oh, okay. So, the original designation of funds is still going through?
We have, this has not affected anything that we've encumbered so far. I know Parks and Rec has some funds they haven't encumbered yet. But with Jerry taking over, he asks that, can I get, he wants to do, he has an idea what to do, but he wants to go through a summer that he's in charge to really have a good idea where to move forward and that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, did you want to add that adjustment? Before we get started going?
Yeah, sure. So, the one thing to that, I just want to say, Rich, it wasn't like the, there was only $5,000 available. And then, as projects were closed out, that money grew. So, it grew to $115,000, between $115,000 and $117,000, and depending on the encumbrance I closed. And so, this $98,000 still leaves $17,000 of available funds for other projects, or if there's any, you know, unexpected problems in the other ones, so.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, just with the retirement liability, I just wanted to run over the numbers, but I didn't plug it in over there, so I have to scramble one more time.
Okay. Okay, so we can, we'll come back to that adjustment. So, probably the easiest thing to do is just kind of go through and see whether anyone is proposing any changes. So, and I think I'll go like the bottom line. Under general government, our first selectmen, you know, 101, we have a negative 1.70% total change from the previous at $206,616. I noticed that, you know, the original request came in at $215,000. The first selectmen's budget came to us at the 20616. Board of Selectmen approved that as is. Does anyone have any changes they want to make to that line item? Okay. Moving on to 102, the assessor's office. The first selectmen's budget was 245,177. And that's the proposed, that we have in front of us, a 4.91% increase overall. Anyone have anything for that? Okay. Tax collectors, 206,467. That was the first selectmen's budget, no changes, an overall increase of 3.66. Anyone have anything for that? Moving on to the building department, 104. We had a negative 1.19% change to that budget, coming in at 275,564. Changes, anybody? Nope?
Kevin, just checking real quick on permit refunds to see, you know, if it gets it, that's something I might be able to identify later on to see. Because we put 50,000, we reduced it from 5,000 to 1,000, and we never even come close to that. But that's something we could take a look at. Where, where, what?
We spent some bit of wrap over there.
Okay, we'll leave it at 1,000.
Okay. Well, appreciate the effort.
Yeah.
So, 105, Town Engineer, total, that was a 3.53% increase at 252,484 proposed budget. All good with that? The Human Resources total in 106 was a 4.58% increase to 145,700. Any changes? I'm going to just count on someone speaking up instead of looking around all the time. Town Clerk, total was a 3.02% that came through without changes from the first selectmen at 168,663. Ledge Light, 108, was a 1.09% increase. Not hearing any requests for change there. IT, the Information Technology total, 449,403. That's a 3.09% increase. It is exactly what the first selectmen proposed. Okay, nothing there. Registars, that was a 17.73% increase. That's for a 131,620 overall.
Denise?
Yeah, I'm looking at that going, that doesn't make sense. I think my line item there might have blended on here.
What were you talking about?
The 110, the registrars.
Okay.
Because it looks like, oh, sorry. No, that's right, because the 2023 was 111,800. It went to 131,620, so a 17.73% increase. And, yeah, I know. No, I thought, I thought I was reading across wrong, so. I know that they discussed primaries and stuff like that in there.
Right, yeah, I have a question as to, I understand the increased cost with primaries. But in the details after this first sheet, they mentioned an audit or a possible audit. And I was just interested how much that audit might run, that, I don't know if that's a...
It's not even so much a type of audit you're talking, it would just be, it's not a really intrusive one.
Okay, and is that the typical increase when we get to primaries?
It is because we, we're being a little more cautious this year because we know there'll be early voting come primary season next year. And there might even be early voting for referenda. So, we're being a little cautious right now. The state says they'll fund it, but here again, they don't have the exact days where it's going to be, whether it'll be in this building or, so this, we don't want to shortchange it when we have some unknowns. State's supposed to help fund it, but, you know, we're not positive yet.
Okay, thank you.
They did have some laptops in there for themselves too, new laptops for the two registrars. But we have the resources in this year's budget to take care of those. So, we've already removed those from that group, okay.
110, Judge of Probate, $21,192. That's a 31.79% increase, but still number overall. Building Maintenance, that was a 7.35% increase. The first selectmen's budget was 910,571. Board of Selectmen reduced it somewhat to 903,471. Then, there were some changes along the way there.
So, this is one of the two changes I was talking about, the two, my clerk orders. It's this one for $90,000, and then you'll see in the police line. This calculation right here, wrong mouse, just to let you know, this wasn't pulling up here, it was pulling sideways. So, that's, I fixed that, so this is now pulling the right way. But, so there's two, so if you go all the way to the bottom, it looks like the Board of Finance has already cut $52,000.
Right.
Thanks. But the Board of Selectmen technically cut it.
Okay.
But they vote on, you know, total amounts, and so that wasn't included. So, we need to vote on that as well.
Okay.
So, or whatever you need to do, but.
Minus?
Minus 25, minus 52,000, the right direction. So, it went down, not up.
Okay, so...
That's being driven by utilities mainly, that increase.
It's the 9,000 here, and then, just so it's all transparent, here's the $52,000 total between those two lines. So, Board of Selectmen technically, they approved this number. They should have approved that number, is what I'm saying.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, so then, we need to make a motion to reduce that.
A few million more that you may have...
No, I've scoured this thing, that's how I found it.
Okay.
Proof, you know, proving all the calculations, so.
So, the number is 52,000?
Overtime. So, it went from 21,000 to 12,000.
Okay. So, we're making two motions?
I think it's easy if you do them two separate, so that they're nice and clean.
Okay. All right. So, that is for the Building Maintenance. I'd like to make a motion to decrease the...
Denise, normally, the chair is, doesn't make motion, yes, someone else makes the motion.
Okay.
I mean, it can, but we usually don't.
All right. Let's find the names.
You can say the whole thing, would anyone like to make a motion to do the bubble?
I'm just trying to move through this. Would anyone like to make a motion to reduce the Building Maintenance overtime budget by... $9,000?
Nine.
John?
Yep. Make a motion to reduce the Building Maintenance line item by $9,000 from 51,300?
Um, use the, I'm sorry, use the, that's the new account number, 0101113.
The overtime.
Okay. So, that's the 9,000?
Correct.
Okay, make a motion to reduce the overtime line item 314 by $9,000. So, that'll result, $3,000 in a...
No, no, that'll reduce it to the 12,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
From 21 to 12.
Okay, John.
Okay.
Birmingham has made a motion. Do I have a second? Paul Maxfield has made the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? No abstentions? Motion carries, 600. That's okay. And now, the next adjustment.
Do you want to go to the second one, so we can get them all done? 43,44.
So, we are in... 216. So, would anyone like to make a motion to decrease the police officer line item from 2,194,109, decreased by 43,044 to a total of 2,151,065? Would anyone like to make that motion?
I have to say so moved.
So moved.
Yep, perfect.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, Lauren makes the motion, and Peter seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? No? Motion carries, 600. So, those are all the adjustments, right?
Correct.
From... So, that's it for adjustments?
That's all I needed.
Okay.
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, so we're done with um...
Building maintenance, or...
So, anyone have anything else for building maintenance? Okay, onto general government and benefits, we're looking at a five point three seven percent increase uh, for a total of five million, zero nine nine, five three six. Everyone good with that?
I, I just have a question. The way our police are funded, their benefits would be within this account, or is it in their...
Their healthcare benefits, you mean?
Yeah, and social security, FICA, Medicare.
Yep, so this is the entire, oh, I'll circle back, click there. Oh, 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 okay. Don't touch any numbers there, cause I'm saving this. So, all of the town, anyone in the general fund, their, their benefits come out of this. So, there was some other discussions where people were talking about the, you know, department spending, every town does it a little differently, some include, break out the benefits by department and have a, you know, a benefit section by department, right now, currently, in Eastline, everything is in this section, right? So, that's the entire towns, um, now, um, with that charge for private duty, a portion that gets charged back to this account, right? So, this is the, the one-stop shop for general fund operations, special revenue fund for park and rec and commission on aging have their own, you know, their own lines for, you know, the, the people that, that special revenue fund funds.
Right.
So, does that answer your question?
Yes, so procedurally, if there are any adjustments to the police budget, it would also then get reflected in this if it's personnel?
Correct, yeah, so if we, you know, if um, we add a police officer, or do anything with police officers or fire, or whoever, um, we, I'll change this number, right? Or, well, at this point, it's gotta be, you know, voted on, but I can tell you the number, we can, you know, work through that.
Oh, okay.
So, and just to let you know, what I've been budgeting for, um, you know, the new hires, I, I don't know if, you know, we're hiring a single or a family, so I always budget for the family plan, right? So, for a police officer, nineteen percent, they pay nineteen percent, the town picks up the other eighty-one percent, so, um, you know, the employer is picking up twenty-eight thousand dollars of a family plan, so I budget for that. So, that's, that's what the budget's for, or not for, but you know what I mean, that's, I budgeted for the higher amount.
Right. Playing it safe.
Any other questions for general government and benefits? Um, onto services community, one fifteen. So, that um, has a proposed budget of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixteen, and is an increase um, from last year's budget by forty-nine point two-one percent. It had been at uh, twenty-six thousand, seven fifty-one. I know we went through this, and uh, we didn't have any...
I think I might have missed that meeting, Denise.
Is there anything you wanted to add to?
Yeah, I, I just, I have a few questions, and, and I, I fully support the services to the community. I just, I, I get a little curious with the um, new organizations, Blue Door and Giving Garden, how the twenty-five-hundred i- is arrived at when, you know, we have some that we give a thousand, some we give six fifty, you know, it's kind of all over the, the place, and I was just wondering if there was a reason for that.
Depends on the requests we get from those facilities too, and with uh, Blue Door and Giving Garden, these are two nonprofits that have, everyone that works there is a volunteer.
Right.
And uh, a little bit in the startup, so they, you know, to, to help get started, because I think Giving Garden has, over the last couple of years, given over eight tons of food.
Right.
To people in need, um, same thing with Blue Door, this is where if you are in need of a walker, a wheelchair, something like that, you make a phone call and you have it, and these are other people that wouldn't otherwise be able to get it, so, and they are in desperate need of, you know, being able to expand into a place to hold their equipment, so I think...
Right.
That's why we looked at the twenty-five-hundred uh, because of, you know, needs in those cases more so than anything else.
Oh, okay, and i- if I remember right, um, I believe Giving Garden also received ARPA funds?
Yes, they did.
Oh, okay. And then, for the, the Main Street program, um, the narrative had mentioned about returning to uh, the, the funding that it, it used to get, but that was also a recipient of ARPA funds?
Yes, they were, they got, well, they got money for uh, the Yale Shoret Study.
Okay, yeah, and then just uh, the, the last question, and I, I know this individual well, but um, for, for the veterans' rep mileage reimbursement, the state or the VA doesn't reimburse him at all?
No, they do not, and up till now, he had, and this, this isn't just for driving around, this is for transportation of people to and from.
Right, I read the narrative.
He never got, you know, we noticed, you, you never got the money, no, I never did, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We felt that...
Yeah, I, I just was curious, um, like I said, I'm fully supportive of these.
Yeah, cause one thing, I, I, Bill Weber said last year, you know, when we talked about uh, service community, what are we missing that, you know, is in need, and so forth like that, cause I, I've talked to others too, I talked to Care and Share, they, you know, they're really comfortable, they, you know, they said if you wanna give it to us, fine, but they, they don't feel they're in need, so we only, but, you know, people or organizations we felt would most benefit by assistance from the town to help citizens and residents of the town.
Right, and to that point about Care and Share, um, I believe they took some of their funds that they had raised to put in a, a, I think, a hot water system in the building there to help the town out.
It's a water heater system, we, we've been, we've been clarified that you, you don't buy a hot water heater, you buy a water heater, because it makes it hot.
Okay.
No, they, they were, so they use some of that to, you know, and now, it's a facility that the town rents, or basically lets them have, and they're supposed to be responsible for basically the maintenance of it, but this is one of those things that I think if they wanted to be a stickler, this would fall on the, the landlord, but they have done it for us, so we all better...
Yeah, no, I just wanted to tip my hat to them because they, part of that also benefited the town side of the building, so, yeah. Okay, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank, all right, do we have like a general policy as to what organizations would qualify for?
No, it's basically, most of the cases, the five-one-C are basically provides a service to the community where they get little or no funding, or basically no funding from the town, because one of the things, uh, you know, we at one time thought about uh, Smith, our Brookside Farms, but they do receive money from the town, so they aren't included in that, and they definitely could use it, but they do get funded by the town, so we try to make it someone that doesn't get funded by the town and has demonstrated a need and also provides a service to the community.
Okay.
Kevin, uh, on the veterans' mileage reimbursement, how did you arrive at the six thousand?
Well, basically, you take the mileage of what you get per mile and roughly what he's, does per year as an estimate, we came up to that, that's all, probably a little bit more than it's gonna cost, but we wanna make sure we have the resources there.
I'm just curious why there's nothing before that, like in twenty-twenty-two?
As I said, this never, he was never getting paid before now.
Out of his own pocket.
He was out of his own pocket, and you know, it's possible he could have taken it off of his income tax, but still, you don't get compensated fully for that, and we just felt, he's definitely providing a service to our veterans in need, he takes them to Newington, to West Haven, uh, to the veterans' hospitals, so we felt that that was well worth it.
Okay.
One trip's a hundred and ten miles.
At a hundred and ten miles, it, it was, it's over sixty cents a gallon now, so it doesn't take much to do that.
Five trips a month, he's spending more than that.
Yeah.
All right, um, moving on to uh, account one sixteen, zoning commission, it's a two point six-two percent increase to one hundred and fourteen thousand, eight ninety-eight. Any changes with anyone? No, on to um, the planning department, one seventeen, that was a twenty point one-seven percent increase, going from uh, eighty-five, zero eight-seven to one oh-two, two, two fifty-three. Everyone had those questions? Finance department, um, proposed budget of four twenty-three, seven sixty-five, a twenty-five point seven-one percent increase, I know we discussed the added um, position there, anyone have any? Okay, contingency, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand, this is um, an increase, this is related to contracts that are...
Pending, yeah.
Yep, so, good there. Board of Finance, fifty-seven thousand, oh fifty-five, a thirty-four point zero-six percent increase. Part, big part of that was the audit costs.
Yeah, that may be, that may be low too, from what I'm, been seeing on some of my assignments, they're coming in close to ten percent higher, so...
But we have another, yeah, it's locked in.
No, we don't have, seven hundred thousand is not locked in, the twenty-four is locked in, twenty-two point three hours.
Okay.
Yeah, get ready.
Four years left, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four this year's, but that's not why I told you about that.
All right. I know, given that we were kind of dependent on them for, to do a lot of old work, we, we weren't looking to...
Correct.
Stir the pot with them before we got the past audits concluded.
So, um, new number should be forty-two thousand, three seventy-five. So, that is the, right around the total price, the fifty-two thousand there, um, and in conversations with Mariana Stevens from the Board of Ed, uh, the Board of Ed covers um, up to fifteen thousand dollars, so if you take fifteen thousand away from the fifty-two, that gives us the thirty-seven. The four, I'm sorry, fifty-seven minus fifteen gives you a forty-two. I don't know what I was looking at there. There's numbers all over the page here.
So, are you saying that we can make an adjustment to the fourteen thousand?
Forty, forty-two, three seventy-five.
So, adjusting it from the fifty-two, five oh five?
Correct.
To forty-two, three seventy-five?
Correct.
Okay, so, would anyone like to make a motion to reduce uh, the audit services budget from fifty-two thousand, five oh five to forty-two thousand, three seventy-five? Want to make that motion, Paul?
Um, I, um, I have to say it's so moved, Paul, yeah, but I don't know if that's, I mean, is this num, you saying this number's locked in?
Correct, I compare with the officer.
It is, okay, well...
It was with the escalation, three percent, or it was contracted, um, it was contracted for three years.
Okay, just one of the surprises, cause I guess what I'm seeing is everybody's, everybody's closer to ten um, this year, um, I'll, I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries six zero zero. Uh, on to Board of Assessment, Appeals, total, reduction of fifty-one point nine-one percent to two thousand, two hundred? See anyone jumped into that? Um, zoning Board of Appeals, a two point five-six increase, eight hundred dollars, everyone's good with that? Um, inland wetlands, a nineteen point three zero percent increase to forty-three thousand, five twenty-six. All good? Waterford Eastline Shellfish Commission total, which is basically going away. Brookside Farm Museum Commission total, sixteen thousand, nine forty, a twenty-six point two-three percent increase. Good with that? Town Building Committee, seven hundred and fifty dollars, zero percent increase. Harbor Management Commission, one thousand, two hundred, eighty-one point nine-five percent decrease. Conservation of Natural Resources Commission, ten point nine-two percent increase to one thousand, two hundred and seventy. Historical Properties, decrease of nine point one-three to nine thousand, three thirty. That's good. Public Safety Emergency Management total, a one point zero-four percent increase to one seventy-three, six thirty-one. All good? Public Safety Dispatch, a decrease of point six-eight percent to six seventy-seven, three fifty-three. Okay. Public Safety Police, a two point seven-nine percent increase to three million, one hundred thirteen thousand, five eighty-six.
Denise?
Yes?
Yes, um, I question um, the addition of, of the two police officers. We had five officers that were out on sick leave this last year at one point in time, and we've been adding, this last year, we added two police officers, and the two previous years, a, an additional police officer, and I know we're trying to get up to the average and move up, but I, I just think this year, maybe we take a break from it.
The chief made it very clear that we're still the tenth lowest in the state as far as per capita, correct?
Right.
And he showed the increase in crime?
Right.
And the fact that with our efforts, we are, have a higher solve rate, but here again, you're stretching your resources thinner, they'll always continue the best job they can with the resources provided.
Right.
But uh, as it is, with the two we're adding, we're only adding really one point four, because they don't even come on until November, which is when the academy would start.
Right.
So, that, instead of even at one and a half, that would be eighteen months, this is only uh, sixteen months of uh, uh, benefits and, and salaries, so um, you know, here again, that's your decision to make, but I think the chief more than demonstrated the need for these resources out there, cause one of the biggest complaints they get is traffic enforcement and, you know, that type of thing, and this will allow him a little bit more ability to, to do some other things as far as, you know, motor vehicle enforcement and that, but here again, I respect whatever decision you guys make.
Right.
Does anyone else want to comment on that? I would say I, I strongly support um, the, the increase, I, I think that um, being the tenth lowest in the state in terms of our, our staffing, um, is something that we should address, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, with, A, I think the chief made a very, very strong argument with, backed up by statistics as the need um, for the added, and I think, yeah, I'm concerned that with all the overtime that they might be putting in um, on the pri- private sector, you know, I don't think we want everyone so over exhausted from everything that...
There are some restrictions to make sure you don't work yourself to exhaustion, I mean, so that's, uh, normally if there's three days, if you have your three days off, you can't work all three of them, and there, there's, there's safeguards for that, but uh, you know, with the five people out, uh, now there's times when you probably, if you did add a couple more, there's times when you might be able not have to call somebody in because you'd still be a minimum manning without someone who might be...
Exactly, and it's a dangerous job, so you can't just count on nobody getting hurt.
I recall.
Yeah.
Very well, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, very much so.
I don't know, Rich, if you want to make a motion, or...
Um, no, I just wanted to toss it out... Um, no, I just wanted to toss it out there. The, the other question I have is, um, if I had understood the presentation correctly, there was a desire to add a, a second K-nine unit?
There is, only because one of the lateral transfers we had still has a dog from his previous department. It's trained and so forth like that, so a lot of the costs that you have for training and so forth are done. Outfitting vehicles, all you have to do, and, and the associated vet bills and that. But, uh, K-nine is a great resource to have.
Okay, I, I didn't realize that there was a dog coming with a lateral transfer.
Well, I just said he transferred, yeah, it did, and, uh, and the previous department he was in was gracious enough to allow him to keep the, keep the dog.
Okay.
Okay, so is everybody good with the public safety police budget?
Yeah, I support the, uh, the two officers.
Okay, good. Onto Public Safety Niantic Fire Department, a two point five nine percent increase to eight hundred thirty-three thousand, six sixteen. Any comments there? No, all good. Public Safety Flanders Fire Department, three point one five percent increase to five ninety-two, six seventy-six. All good. Public Safety Fire Marshal, uh, budget of two fourteen, nine ninety, an increase of twenty-three point four seven percent.
And here again, you'll be voting on a couple days, or you'll be, no, actually, you don't see it. It'll, uh, because...
Turnout.
Because, not the turnout care, but the, uh...
Increase in rates.
I was just saying the fees, but these, that won't come to you, because that's an ordinance that, uh, we're gonna have a public hearing on it at the next Board of Select meeting. And if we approve it that night, then after the posting, ten days after that, that'll go into effect. So, it will, we will generate some revenue from that, and we've figured on a very conservative side of what we anticipate for next year.
Onto Public Safety Animal Control Officer, twenty-three point zero three percent increase to a budget of one twenty-four, one forty-nine. Proposed budget. Okay. Public Works Highway and Sanitation, a decrease of one point one seven percent to a total proposed budget of three million, nine oh six, four seventy-two.
I just have a question on the twenty-twenty-three budget. There was an adopted budget of ten thousand dollars for traffic calming measures, and it's showing that the amended twenty-twenty-three budget was zero.
So, we, um, hold on a second. Let me just show you, this work paper has a few more columns. So, here's the ten thousand dollars, and, um, here's the transfers that I have yet to have approved, but will be coming in, in the next month or so. So, um, he transferred that money, I believe, to, uh, Bulky Waste, or one of these accounts down here. So, he, he did a, you know, an internal, inner, inner department transfer, moved the money around a little bit. So, uh, there was a ten thousand dollar budget originally, so if you're wondering, I thought there was one, there was, but he's, uh, moved the money in other areas.
Yeah, 'cause that I thought would help with the, the traffic complaints that, that we receive in town.
Any... All good with Public Works Highway and Sanitation? All right. Commission on Aging?
Um, you could reduce, uh, the line item from eighty-three, six two nine to, uh, seventy-eight. That's what the, uh, new, uh, director will be, uh, agreed to for salary. So, you can reduce that by five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars.
Okay. So, from eighty-three, six twenty-nine to...
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight even? So...
No, it, uh, it goes up to seventy-eight on July first. Right now, we negotiated coming in based their ninety-day probationary, and then up to seventy-eight come July first.
So...
Seventy-eight, seventy-eight.
So it is seventy. All right, would anyone like...
I'll make a motion to increase the, uh, senior center administrator line by five thousand, reduce it by five thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. What line number?
Do I have a second? Second. Lauren, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six zero zero.
We might be able to see some more for next year in that, in the drivers, because right now, there's one full-time and two, one regular part-time and a real part-time person. And, uh, the full-timer most likely gonna retire, which we're looking at going with three part-timers vice that, which will result in savings, but we don't know that for sure.
Anything else under the Commission on Aging? Health and Welfare Human Services, decrease of thirty-eight point four six percent to six thousand. And then, oops, sorry, that was the subtotal, looks like, so...
It's four point eight three.
Total was a four point eight seven percent increase to one million, two oh seven, seven fifty-five. One's good there. Parks and Rec Commission total? An increase...
We, we need, um, Culture and Recreation Library.
What number?
Department four twenty.
Well, I, I did say Health and Welfare Human Services total, which includes the library.
Oh, okay.
It's on a separate thing.
Right, so we're good there. So, Parks and Rec Commission total, a five point seven five percent increase to eight forty-seven, eight seventy-three. Okay. Debt Service, a twenty-six point three eight percent increase to six million, one ninety-eight, one eighty-nine. Not really anything we can do about that today. And then, we have the Capital Outlay, Capital Equipment total, total. And that's a decrease of ten percent of six hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and forty. Everybody good there? So that pretty much wraps up...
Yeah, that's one you can re, could reduce by the ninety-eight, one sixty.
Yeah, that was the one we...
Right, uh, that's, that's where we identified the, uh, we gave you the...
Ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars.
You could reduce, uh, the capital, that's all money that would be cash paid for items. And here again, uh, like, we, we looked at some other things too, but these are things that would be, uh, qualified under the American rest...
So, do we need to make the motion, um, by each individual bucket here?
You could just, well, you're gonna approve, uh, or you're gonna see something on...
On Wednesday.
Wednesday night. If that's approved at the town meeting, following that, because one of the things we agreed to, even that money's already been appropriated and that, that was always, it was, Rich, you're on it, I think it was always agreed that any expenditures out of that would go before a town meeting, so that's what this is gonna do. And that would be able to reduce it by ninety-eight thousand, one sixty. So, once that's, that approved at all levels, but I don't foresee it not...
Okay. So, we might, from a timing perspective, want to do that?
It'll, uh, it'll go before a town meeting, the first meeting in May, which, whatever the first, Wednesday in May is, is when that would probably be approved.
Okay.
So, you'd have time to make an adjustment prior to...
Okay, all right. All right, so that, that wraps up the town side of things. So, with the adjustments that were made tonight... I'll let you two...
I just want to, um, give you two scratchies, because this is saving my laptop. And that one is just very important, but...
So, like, you know, I, I think I'd overall just say, I think, you know, Mr. Sherry did a great job of really, um, going through every single department and doing what he, what he could to get, um, the lowest possible budget before us. And, um, so I feel like we didn't have a whole lot of work up here to do, because, um, you, you know, and the departments really did a wonderful job.
From what the original, uh, request is, we've cut about one point one million, reduce the increase by one point one million. And I got, you, department heads, I asked them to step up, and they really did. I mean, even if it was a couple thousand and that. And, you know, and we have to thank Mother Nature a little bit too, 'cause, uh, the, you know, the mild winter did allow us to do a lot of things as far as storm preps for next year, we can take care of this year. We got, you know, yeah. Smile, Mother Nature smiled on us.
All right. So now, I'd like to, um, uh, move on to the Board of Ed budget discussion. Thank you, uh, Mr. Newen, Jeff, and Mariana, for, and your staff, for the patience and work, um, and answering all of our questions, and, um, you know, I know it's a lot of work, so thank you for your cooperation. I know, as I asked Mr. Sherry at the start, um, the Board of Ed adopted their budget prior to the final numbers coming in from the state in regard to insurance. So, um, I know we had asked a couple of questions when, um, when you presented, but, um, so before we even start looking at things, I just wanted to know if you wanted to give us an update on exactly what the change to, um, the insurance line will be for...
Yeah, it's exactly what we, uh, we wanted to share. I was speaking with, uh, our chairman of the board, Eric Baumann, and, uh, we wanted to make sure everybody was aware that we had put in the twelve percent, uh, for a, an insurance increase. So, that is still in there, um, as everyone is aware. We're looking at now a seven point two five percent for the Board of Ed and the Board of Ed side, which reduces four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, I think in, um, that it's a helpful number, as it lowers our overall eight point eight, um, down by four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, that's really the, that was our, a big savings for us, so we wanted to make sure we shared, share that out.
And I, and I just, I wanted to really make note that this is, you know, if off the top, you're reducing it by four hundred and seventy-five thousand. I know there's always the semantics that gets wrapped up with the public about us cutting your budget. We're not cutting your insurance budget, you know, we're, we're incorporating the latest information, so...
Yeah.
You know?
Which is good news.
Yeah, and I, and I, I think the other thing is, you know, with all of the communication that we do get from residents, they're, they're always saying, you know, "Don't cut the Board of Ed budget, don't cut the Board of Ed budget." So, I just wanna level set, you know, the, the budget in two thousand nineteen, um, twenty fiscal year, the Board of Ed budget was forty-eight million, six seventy-two. In twenty-twenty-one is, it was fifty million, eight seventy-one, I'm rounding, twenty-one, twenty-two, it was fifty-two million, oh ninety-seven. And then, a, um, a budget of fifty-four million, one oh eight. So, the Board of Finance has not been cutting the Board of Ed budget each year, which somehow gets out there in the community. But right now, uh, you're proposing a fifty-eight million, nine fourteen, eight fifty-two budget, which is an eight point eight eight percent, which we can now reduce by that four hundred and seventy-five thousand in the insurance line.
Correct.
So, um, so at, at this point, I feel, um, you know, since we can't do with the Board of Ed budget what we just did with the town budget, which is go line by line, um, we can only make an additional total cut if we wanted to. I'd like to kind of open it up to our Board of Finance members. I think last year, I, I opened with what I thought, so I thought this year I get to go last, um, and so...
I am accusing myself, so if it's all right, you can stay here if you want.
Um, I, so, for the record, Paul Maxfield is recusing himself from the Board of Edu, Board of Education budget, but I'd like him to stay, because at the end of the day, um, we'll be voting on a mil rate and, and, um, so that would be incorporating everything. Do we want to start at the end? Richard, do you have any comments that you'd like to make in regard to what you think an appropriate number should be?
He, yeah, I, it, it's always, uh, an honor to go first. Uh, as we had communicated back and forth, I wanted to make sure that the positions that were originally put on the line as cuts were not things that dealt with SEL, and Jeff has, had assured me of that. And so, I, I guess, Denise, do you want me to, to give the total, including the four seventy-five, or separate from the four seventy-five?
I, I think maybe separate from the four seventy-five.
Okay.
Let's, you know, we'll just put that in the...
Okay.
We know that's an adjustment, and where do we go from there?
Okay. I, I really didn't want to cut anything from the budget, but, um, for the, the sake of, of taxpayers in the town and for people that are on fixed incomes, um, I looked at the data that was presented and, uh, tried to interpret it as best as I can. And my eyes aren't your eyes, and so there, there may be differences. And as our chair had mentioned, we, we can't do line item, um, cuts. But, uh, I, I'm thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand dollars reduction.
All right.
And just to be clear, that's in addition to the reduction that we have with the four seventy-five. Um, Kevin, can you adjust the four seventy-five already? That way we can just...
All right, so, I'll put the four seventy-five on this one, then we can use the bottom one, because there's two counts.
Yeah.
That, and then the additional cuts we can cover below, right here.
Okay.
Something like that.
You put in a million.
Yeah, you, and you put in a million?
I, I was just, just...
Just putting.
Make sure the cash flow formula works.
Yep, okay.
Not the, hold on, we can do.
She didn't bump this.
I just think it's helpful because then when we go back to summary, we can see exactly what happens to.
Thank you for the aging eyes.
Thank you.
All right. Is that easy to see, guys?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And so, what was that, what was the proposal?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand, so.
Does that include?
No, that's in addition to the 475.
So, that's up to 1.275, right?
Yep. And so, then, if we looked at the summary, what, what does that do to the total?
1.11 mils, 4.66% increase.
So, with the proposed, let me just go back here, the proposed 1.275 million for the Board of Ed cuts on top of the town cuts, the total cuts is 1.44 million on the summary page. That drops our mils to under 25, but a 1.11 mil increase, mil rate increase. So, it's 4.66% increase with that, with that proposal.
Okay, and is that inclusive of funds from the undesignated fund balance?
Correct, so.
You know, that's a good point. Do you want to walk through?
The revenue side?
The, or the undesignated fund balance recap and how we're using that.
Sure, so I know there's been some discussion about use of the rainy day fund, which now we call, you know, the fund balance. So, in our calculations, when we were trying to, you know, build the revenue side of the budget, for the last couple of years, the towns used 1.3 million dollars as a budgetary number. This year, we've exceeded that in revenues, so we're not going to have to touch that 1.3 million dollars. So, so I was the one who came up with that $2 million number, and my thought process was the 1.3 million dollars from the, the fund balance, AKA rainy day fund, from the prior year, we did not touch, and then $700,000, you know, kind of like a little less than, or a little more than half for this year. Now, the difference between this year and prior years is, like, in this current year, I, I think I did that budget projection, that might have been the Board of Selectmen. But, anyway, we're, we're over budget on revenue side, so we don't need to touch that 1.3 million dollars this current year. Next year, that's not the same case because I, you know, I've lifted every rock I could, and that's where I found that $500,000 for motor vehicle supplemental that we have at the top of our revenue work paper here. So, this number was kind of inflating all our revenues every year by 500,000. I've uncovered that, it's in the budget, so we're going to use that use of fund balance unless we uncover another shiny rock for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars or a million bucks. I don't see that coming, so we've unturned all the rocks, there's no hidden revenues built into this budget. I've, I've found them all and I've identified them. So, there's three new drivers for revenue, use of fund balance. We, we, we had a budget in the past, we never actually used it, I anticipate we're going to use it. Investment earnings, we're budgeting $625,000. Last year, we budgeted $20,000. That's something to keep in mind too also, as the Fed looks to kind of stalling out these rate increases. And then, the third one is, I'm drawing a blank. Oh, God, there's a third one. Well, there's a third revenue source I found, I forgot about it, but that was a couple hundred thousand. Ringing any bells, Kevin?
Yeah.
Okay, if it comes back to me, I'll bring it up, but there was three new revenue drivers this year.
The building permit?
Oh, use of bond premium, use of bond premium, I took some of that, and that's in here as well. That is down here as well in the other revenues, use of bond premium for 500,000.
So, overall, what we're saying is that we.
Overall, we're, we're, we're using $2.7 million of essentially one-time revenues. So, next year, we have to budget for that unless we find more one-time revenues, which would be great, I don't anticipate it, so, you know, we are using the, the fund balance this year already.
Yes, but we.
Two million of the fund?
Two million dollars, correct.
And some of that is one-time funding, or all of that 2 million is one-time funding?
Um, so, so that's, that's, that's a withdrawal right out of our savings account to plug. So, really, let me pull back the front screen, just kind of explain it. So, really, the town is, you know, say we're budgeting for, you know, 85 million dollar, 85.9 million of expenses. On the revenue side, we're really budgeting, you know, 83.9, and there's a $2 million stopgap there for the fund balance. If we collect more than the 83.9 million dollars in revenue, we will not use the fund balance. So, that's what's been happening the last couple of years. We're budgeting 1.3 million dollars, for this current year example, we budgeted the 1.3 million dollars used for fund balance. I'm projecting we're going to go over by 1.7 million dollars. So, we don't need to use that 1.3 million dollars, that's why I was okay using it in next year, because we're not using it this year as well as next year. It, we're, we're kind of saving it from this year and carrying it forward to next year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we'd be maintaining the 14.96.
I think it's 14.96, the last calculation I did, correct? Yeah.
Overall, we want to.
So, yeah, I mean.
Continue to keep that up there.
Yeah, GFO is 16.67, working capital, best practice.
Yeah. Thank you, Richard. Peter?
Um, I.
Your thoughts?
My thoughts are difficult. I was looking at this chart where the departments proposed, and then the superintendent had a proposed budget, and then after some public meetings, the budget crept up again. And I was kind of looking at that as sort of how to look at this, and I, um, so for a starter in the discussion, I was willing to cut that down the middle at about a $500,000 cut, expecting to use some of the undesignated funds to make up the difference, but that's why I was asking about that. And I think, you know, that's kind of where I fell at this point. I, I really have a hard time proposing any adjustment to the school budget, listening to what the school has been through in the last couple of years, and in talking to people in the community about this, most of the people that I've spoke to said, I'll pay the increase in taxes, you know, that, that's most of what I've heard. I certainly wasn't scientific, it certainly, based on statistics, there's a small percentage of people that, in town, that have their kids in school, you know, and trying to weigh all that. So, I am struggling with that, but that's where I came from at this point.
So, you're, you're.
Hovering in that area, yeah.
Like?
500,000.
500 as well.
Plus the 475?
And that's plus the 475.
Yeah, 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 I like that 475.
So, that's 500,000. So, we're just.
1.22?
Correct, 1.22 mil rate increase, brings us just a hair over 25 mils. And it's a 5% tax increase, 5.500, 5.12% tax increase.
John?
I have a couple of different scenarios, but one of the things I looked at was the demographics in the town, and about 27% to 30% of the people in town have families with kids in school, so that leaves, say, 70% of people don't have kids in school. So, to me, the Board of Finance's job is to, as far as looking at tax situations, look at the whole town and try to not tax the 70% more than they should be because 48% of the town are over 55. So, I have to consider when I look at the budget, to try to keep the mil rate and the taxes at what was possible for that segment of population. So, I came up with, I, I had that health insurance, I kind of thought of 500,000, so you came in at 475. To that being said, and not going into line items, I came up with a total of 1.241 million dollars that is subtracted from the 58,914,852. And that would leave us with approximately 6.77% as far as the increase.
Can you read that number again?
What's that?
Can you read that number, Kevin?
That's precise.
Is that inclusive of the 475?
Yes, including the 475.
Oh, okay. Can we do math? Hold on.
It may not be the right figure.
I got 766667? Okay. So, that's just a little above Mr. Steele's at 1.11, so it's, it's under the 25 mil rate, it's a 4.7 increase of 1.1, 1.12 mils.
So, a little below. Richard had 800,000.
He said 80766.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I meant, yeah, I was looking at the mil rate number, like a gall score.
And, okay. Thank you. Lauren?
Yes, so, I think the number I was considering was in alignment with Peter, around 500,000. I think, hearing the challenges the schools have faced, combined with, I think it's simply more expensive to educate children, and that felt fair on top of the other adjustment. I do agree with John, I think we have to remember taxpayers who don't have children in the system, the school system. I do think that there are individuals in town that don't have kids in the system that care deeply about this. Well, I know my daughter will be attending Eastline Public Schools while she's not there yet, so I think that while that number, that 70% is incredibly important, I do think that there are taxpayers who don't have children in the system who deeply value the education that we have in Eastline. And so, that felt to me like a fair number at this point, balancing both those interests.
Okay, so then, that, that mil rate and would be the same as, as what Peter had suggested, so 1.22 and a 5.12% increase. So, I guess that leaves me, and, you know, ideally, what I was hoping for was that we would not have an increase of the mil re, mil rate over, over one, wouldn't increase it by more than one, which we're not getting to with the proposals so far here. And I think, you know, I, I realize that so many of the costs are fixed and based on the collective bargaining. And so, because of that, it's, it's why it's so important that we're very careful about add to staff. I mean, when, when the salaries and benefits make up over 33 million of your budget, you know, obviously, then I'm looking at, at the staffing. And over the last couple of years, we keep saying, or having the discussions that the, the positions that were funded by the federal grants, we need to make sure that they go away once the grant money goes away because we just can't keep building this in. And so, I was reading an article just last week, and it was titled, "Another COVID Fail: School Budget Cliffs With Gaping Holes." It quoted a recent RAN study that found 77% of school districts used the federal money on exactly what numerous other fiscal hawks cautioned against, beefing up staff with little regard for the future. Roughly half of district leaders see a fiscal cliff looming after COVID-19 federal aid expires. So, the RAN researchers, you know, did this report, and the study noted that over three quarters of public school districts have increased their number of teaching and non-teaching staff above pre-pandemic levels. So, I, so I tried to look back over the last five years of, of where we've been and where we are now. So, I looked at the student population trends from, from the documents from the Board of Ed, and I see in 2018, we had 2,757 students and 503 staff members, so that's a ratio of 5.51 students per staff. For fiscal year 2023, we have 2,562 students and 511.36 staff, so that's a ratio of 5.01 students per staff. The proposed 2024 budget calls for 512.57 staff members and projects enrollment declining to 2,535 students this year and steadily declining for the next three years. The projections indicate that you don't expect enrollment to reach last year's levels over the next 10 years. So, so I just extrapolated and said if we use the same ratio of students to staff that we had in 2018, we would have 460.07 staff members, which is 52 and a half fewer staff members than the budget. And I know you want to address this, Jeff.
I just want to clarify, yeah, some number, a number, just because you're working off estimates.
Yeah.
We, we have over 2,600 students, we have 2,615, we don't have 25, those are estimated numbers.
Okay.
So, just, just to be clear on the.
Okay, so which number should I adjust?
You should be working up, 2,615 is where we're at right now. Yeah, we've never gone under 2,600 students in, in my nine years here, and we've, so it's fluctuated to 2,800 and 2,600, and it's projected to, to stay within that, that, that range. So, that estimated number is lower than what we're actually at.
But, I think even with those updates, it, it still would, would show that we have a far more staff members than we would have had if we had the same ratio that we had back in 2018.
Yeah, and I think partly mainly due to the fact that we've gone, special education numbers from 300 up to over 500 special education students requiring staffing supports. So, I think that's why you've seen the level, you know, basically maintain the same. So, actually, if you, if you didn't have that in the equation, we probably would have, we would have lower staff numbers. But, we don't because of, of those needs. And over, you know, 200 student increase in, in special education students.
And, all right, yeah. So, I guess the, I think, I think we're going to have a hard time reducing the budget, the 2,797,103, which is the, the, the one mil rate based upon where we are, but I think we, we do have some, I, I could definitely find the 800,000, and I suspect, John, you'd go to 800,000, because, you know, I, I think that that isn't far off from the superintendent's original. isn't far off from the superintendent's original.
Denise, if I may. Much as the superintendent had presented an original budget, presented a second one, presented a third one. In listening to fellow board members, I I I feel more comfortable at the 500,000 rather than the 800,000. There are some mandates that I am hoping could be delayed, that the state is not funding at this point. And I I I want to be fiscally responsible, but I also realize that today's student is not the student from 2018. The challenges are are much greater and staff number ratios to students' numbers. It's apples and oranges in my mind at this point because the students are much different. And I I I would like to give the full budget, but I I I can't really do that. And I would also like to have it be a lot lower. But in listening to Peter and Lauren, I I I think we need to kind of go closer to the 500,000 mark.
Denise, also, I just was texting with Holly Cheeseman because we know there's a a really good possibility we'll get upwards of 284 to 300,000 probably restored for ECS. And, you know, and here again, she said they'll have a better idea next week when appropriations pass their spending bill. And that'll be know later than Friday, April 21st. So let's hope there's some good news out there from restoration of some ECS money there. So I was hoping she said we passed it tonight, but that was not the case, so.
So then if that money was restored, you know, that helps on their revenue side. And therefore we could.
And and, you know, may hopefully maybe some restoration with some pilot funding, which was cut from us as well. But we were told early on back in, I think, February, if not earlier, that if they were to fund pilot fully, it would require an additional 400 million. And the 400 million they already set aside for it was probably going to get cut. So that's probably not going to happen.
Did you say no pilot or just less?
No, there is, but not. It would to fully fund pilot would roughly take another 400 million dollars.
That's not there.
And that's not there. And it's what they do have there, a little bit of that has already been cut back a little bit, too. We're not getting what we had in pilot, correct?
As of right now.
As of right now, so. Sometimes we do get a little bit back, but, you know, here again, it's that late April, early May, when things start happening. You know, budgets are done backwards. The state should adopt theirs first, so then we know where to go, but we have to do it in reverse. Sure.
Just to go back to the education cost sharing grant getting restored. So I just did a little scenario. If it gets restored to the original amount, so if we restore, if we restore the I know my eye, I probably have the best eyes, and that's bad. Two, if I add the 284, 773, and we leave the $500,000 placeholder in there instead of 800,000, that brings us in the same spot, 1.11. So, you know, because we're just moving the, you know, we're adding revenue or we're subtracting expenses. It's a matter, you know, on the Board of Ed side, it's that's budgeted differently. But over here, you know, that's how we're accounting for it, so.
And I I do hear from the the other people at AHAPA and so forth like that. Some of the other areas where, you know, anything above a mil is something that they really can't support. So here again, that's of a real concern. You know, on our side, you know, it was tough to cut in a lot of areas, but, you know, we did. And, you know, Kevin, I think I asked him too. I mean, here again, milling piece doesn't really translate as what does that, how does that affect my taxes? And I think that's what, you know, people need to hear. Like if if your house is assessed at or at 300,000, what's that going to be for a tax increase? I mean, I think that's that makes it easier for people to understand what the challenges are going to be for the upcoming year.
Right. And I I know I guess it's it's, you know, who we encounter during the day.
Right, right, of course, of course.
We have a lot of walkers on our street and 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 for me, it's always, they better not forget about us seniors and and, you know, it's it's tough on top of spending eight dollars on a dozen eggs, you know, every everything is. And, you know, I I think I would also say the Board of Board of Education, you know, the schools are great here. I mean, this is a testament to all the people that work there, but also, you know, all of our families. And I don't think that it's just about, you know, how much money is is being spent. It's it's all of the other things that, I mean, if you looked at who spends the most money, they're definitely not the ones that have the best outcomes.
Right, right.
I think you're, you know, right there in the middle of of the derg in terms of your spending right now. So I don't think we are underfunding the Board of Ed. And I think we have great families that take interest. I think more than anything else, it's it's that involvement with the family and and being part of the community. It's not just about the dollars that are being spent. And, you know, I agree. It's just we we have, as John said, you know, a huge proportion of people on fixed incomes, people with, you know, much lower incomes. And and they're struggling. So I, you know, I like I said, my original goal was was not to increase by more than one mil. You know, maybe if we're a little bit over and maybe we could sort of compromise somewhere like 650 instead of 500.
You were back on the mil, and you used 1.2 mil increase? That's not counting the instead of 1.1, yeah.
So this, the. It's all it's all tied together. So what was the question? So like this is at the current mil of or the current, you know, budget proposal of 500,000.
I thought we added in some, I thought it was.
That revenue is not, that that I did not add that revenue.
We did not add that.
No, 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 no.
Too soon.
Yeah. I think something in writing from the state of Connecticut saying they're giving it to us before.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying here, okay, I'm trying here.
So how would it look with 650 reduction?
Okay. And then if we go to and we go to the mill rate work paper, that's a 1.16% increase. So taxes on the house annually, if it's a $450,000 house, $7,800. So that's a an increase of $63 a month. But you know what? Hold on a second, I want to be.
Is that right?
Well, it's just, the problem is, you know, the price of values went up. So really, let me just use the same amount here. Okay. So there you go, it's a 30. If the house was valued the same year over year, I don't know how that happens. It's a $30 increase per month on top of your $625 payment.
How about go back to the summary page? I think that kind of showed the, so you've added it.
Exactly 25 mils. So I'll verify, my numbers are tying back together, just checking.
Yep.
Excel doesn't lie. Do you want to run any other projections or scenarios?
I mean, that that would bring it, you know, to overall. Can you slide up?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay. I want to look at the whole.
I just tried to make it large so we could all see it.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, hold on, I'll try a little, let me, oh my God, wrong, wrong key word. Here we go, okay.
Most of the time.
Okay, I'm sorry, here, hold on, you know what we're doing? We're going to eliminate some of these columns. The Board of Ed, the town. Can you guys see that one?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would bring the Board of Ed budget increase to 6.80%, which is certainly not an insignificant increase. And I I know we've been told it's hard to compare town to town because of the different utilization or non-utilization of of grants, but it's still an increase of 3,681,000.
Excuse me, Kevin.
Yep.
For that monthly increase, could you give us what the value would be at 500,000 and at the proposed 650,000?
Oh, oh, sorry, sorry, I meant a housing value.
Yeah, yeah.
So right here, instead of six, it's currently at 650.
Okay.
So this is currently at the $650,000 budget cut.
Okay, so 30 and 30 and a half dollars per month. So if you go to the 500,000, how much is the monthly increase? It's a $1.50.
You know, it's a lot of people don't really focus on the monthly because it's coming out of their, you know, mortgage payments and don't really see it. The thing we, you know, we also have to think about is, you know, that minimum budget requirement will continue to go up. And that sort of ties your hands every month, every year when we go through this process. So I mean, that their budget's been going up by about 2 million, or a little under 2 million each year. Going to the 625 is still a significant increase over previous year increases. So I'm going to try to get a sense of where everybody is. We we could think about this over the next two days and at our meeting Wednesday night. Take it up again and see whether.
Do you want to see any more examples up or down? Either direction or?
No, this is 650.
This is 650, yep. This is. I'm sorry, 500. You know what I'm going to do, I'm going to make this interactive up here.
Add another column for the 650 and the 500.
I was going to say, do we add the ECS?
No, he's not letting us. He's not letting us add the ECS. Yeah.
No, two column, one for the 650, one, you know, one for.
Yeah.
So you want totally new columns? I was just going to say, so we can just go over here and change this number to your 650,000. That's 6 million, we don't do that. And so see, it shows up here, I can just print these so you can.
Okay.
I mean, I could do it the other way, too, but it might just take me more than a minute.
Okay, so the 650 is 365 a year or?
Yep.
Yeah. And 500 is probably like 380 a year. Then here we go.
So Kevin, did you think Holly felt pretty confident about the ECS?
I I think everybody, is it on? Okay, I think everybody feels confident that that ECS would get refunded or restored because it was the Speaker of the House, it was one of the co-sponsors of the bill. So I think there's a high degree of comfort, but, you know, it's, you know, you hate to say yes, it's a sure thing. Because I know in the past, it's we've gotten something, we always get a little bit back right at the end. There's been times when between the public hearing for the Board of Finance and going into the next room to set things up, good news has come in. It's that late, so, you know, I think there's a high degree of comfort, but, you know, it's not, you know, it's not 100%.
But if it was restored, could we see what it looks like?
With restoration.
There's your one person, there's your one.
Getting closer.
Yeah, one mil. That's what I was asking, that's why I was asking the question.
You know, I mean, if Matt Ritter wants it. Yes.
Is that the 650 or is that?
That's what the 650.
That's what the 650.
And how much exactly was that ECS?
I think it was 280, 284.
Jeff or Mary humor, I think the ECS. Yeah, I knew it's 284. Okay, that's 284, 773, so. And sometimes they find a little more to give us, too, but, you know, you hate to wait, you know, wait to that last minute.
I'm going back to the 800 now, then.
You want to see the 800?
With with the, with the with the restored ECS.
Okay, and then this, this is with the restored ECS, brings us to a mil. So.
So what do you, what would you like to do? Would you like to think about it and then we'll vote on it Wednesday? Do I have a different suggestion?
What do you think? We can sleep on it. Three votes for 500. It's only $150. You can go from five to 60. You can go from 5 to 650.
Or from 650 to 5. So we sold both.
You know.
Think of the force of senior citizens.
And, you know, again, I think you have to look at the number itself, and that number just will continue to grow, you know, if we're.
So.
It's, if you're just thinking about it as, you know, the 500 or the 800, I think it, you know, it takes away from focusing on what is the total increase to the budget that they're asking for. And.
The other thing, too, is if we're going to go into a recession, and the budget comes up next year, we're going to be locked into that minimum requirement of 58 plus million dollars. So then historically, the Board of Ed budget has increased every year between 3, 4% in that neighborhood. So next year, say it's 58 million and change, we're going to add another 4% onto that. And then a year after that, another, so it's going to be, you know, 60 million before you know it. The Board of Ed has given money back to what it.
Well, just to point out, we've given, the town side has given back double from almost triple what the town has. So that's, let's not play that one because we all try to be very cautious with how we spend our money.
I'm not saying that town is. We have to look forward, not backward.
And it's the taxpayers' money to begin with, you know, so. Sure.
Just going to that 1.6, I mean, 1.650 in total, you're going to see significant positions, position reductions. So I just want to make sure that that's, you know, that's out there. We're back down where I know the Board of Ed, our community, our staff, all did not want to be. So we're going to hear a lot of strong voices around that, so I just want to.
Is there a number where you wouldn't have to eliminate staff? That you'd be able to?
Not positions, because we have put all the positions, you know, back in. I think everybody understands, you know, there needs to be a reduction of sort, but, you know, if we, the insurance component, you know, as well as, you know, that larger number for, you know, a reduction, you're climbing well over, you know, a million dollars now in total. That's, that's staff. And I know, to the rich about SEL, we're back looking at everything again. So, you know, all bets are off the table sort of thing as to what we can and can't do sort of thing. So we go right back to our initial list of cuts that we would be, represent to the Board of Ed. So that's a, that's a challenge.
Could I ask a question, Jeff?
Sure, John.
Of all your staff, what percentage of your staff live out of town?
What percentage live out of town? Oh, boy. We, yeah, 40% maybe? Forty, maybe?
How many?
Maybe 35 to 40% live out of town? That might be a little low.
Yeah, because the reason I ask it, I got quite a few emails supporting the Board of Ed.
Yeah.
And close to half lived out of town. So I'm thinking to myself, they really don't have any skin in the game because they live out of town, they're not going to be taxed on each line taxes, they're going to be taxed wherever they live.
Yep. Yeah, no, understandable, yeah. Yep.
Okay.
All right, well.
So I was just texting with my old finance director, shout out to Marcia, and she suggested a good, you know, a good activity would be to kind of project out, not with these percentages because they don't really reflect the last five years, right? But take, you know, and I'll work out a work paper. I could, you know, look forward the next five years of what the budget looks like just to give everyone a better understanding and, you know, just use, you know, maybe like a five-year historical increase or something like that, some of these lines. With regards, you know, I'll play with the debt service one to make sure it's actual, but I can just give you a projection to give you a better picture of what the budget will look like in a couple of years from now, if that helps. But if not, let me know, because that'll be hours of my time.
So would that, would that just be projecting or would you do retrospective as well?
I would just take that front, this front proposed budget and then take the last couple of years worth of increases, average them together, and then just project out the next five years.
Okay.
And then, you know, look at one-time revenue sources and things like that.
Because I was thinking as an internal control, maybe another five-year time from historical. I don't know if that would be a good internal control or not.
Like backtesting?
Yeah. Pre-pandemic.
That sounds like a perfect job for the deputy finance director.
Which we approve.
Okay, so I think, I think, why don't we think about it the next couple of days? I'd say I was at 800, I'm willing to compromise and come down, but I hope that you guys might be willing to compromise and come a little bit higher than the 500. And maybe think about that for Wednesday. Okay? And Kevin, maybe, Kevin Gervais, maybe you can share your little mil rate spreadsheet with the group. And that way, if people want to play at home, they can model around with the numbers.
I'm going to zero these out.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep.
So just so everyone knows, if I zero those out, the front screen, 157.
Okay.
So Kevin, one request. If you don't have the assistant finance director in place yet and you do want to play with the forward projection, would you be able to look at this year as a blip, an outlier, and maybe, you know, take these numbers but then go like historical trends?
For the last, for the next five, four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I think that concludes our budget deliberations. Next on the agenda is board comments. Does anyone have anything they want to share?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to share just a little highlight from Kathy Austin's recent commentary in the day. And it's essentially, she said, fasten your seatbelts, it's going to be a bumpy ride. That because of the trying times, that like the state can't be an ATM for everybody wanting to get cash out, we can't meet all the wants and needs and desires and please everybody. So we're going to do the best we can, but fasten your seatbelts.
Yes, indeed.
Yep, yep.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Let's move. Second.
All those in favor, second please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for adjourned.